Okay, okay, okay. Listen, good evening, good evening to all, good evening to everybody that's on the call today. Our virtual town meeting where we're going to be speaking and enjoying some conversation, but also importantly, learning something very important. So, we have our guest on tonight, we have Mr. Eric Campbell, I'm doing that because you're the only guy on here right now. Except for Dr. Brinson's husband in the background. Keep it up, keep it up. We have Julie Becker, we have Dr. Cynthia Brinson. Did I say your name right? Angela, I am so sorry. Okay, but I apologize, that was my first mistake. Angela, Dr. Angela Brinson. And our candidate, Shannon Campbell. And for those who are visiting with us, we simply ask that you would maintain some decorum for tonight. If you're not the speaker, would you kindly either mute yourself or I will mute you myself? So, I don't want to do that. All right, so having said all of that, welcome, welcome once again. Are we going to turn it over to Shannon? Shannon, you know what? Everybody, do you know everybody on the screen?
I do.
Okay, that's good, because we had to make introductions when we came on. And since we're limiting the time tonight, let's do this.
Yes.
Tell me, first of all, whatever it is that you were going to tell me, that you said you don't tell me, you tell me that now.
I like that, I like that, I like to have fun, that's what I wanted to be about. Even though we're going to have a serious candid conversation tonight about public safety and how it relates to us as a community. I like to keep that sense of humor and laughter in the plan, that's always a great thing.
Absolutely.
Basically, basically, I am Shannon Campbell, a candidate for the City of Miami Gardens Council seat number one. And I bring work to the table. I mean, I'm a voice for the people, and my motto is, where connections is a lifestyle. So, I try to stay connected to the right people. So, and I am the right choice and the right voice. So, I brought on some colleagues of mine, friends, neighbors, that I feel that I'm connected to, that we're moving in a positive forward direction. And I brought them on board tonight to share some information with our listeners. So, with that being said, Mr. Tim Williams, our moderator, I bring it back to you.
Absolutely, absolutely, wonderful, you started off great, I love that. Listen, our next participant up is Ms. Julie Becker. And Julie is going to talk to us about voter registration. I think that's a very important thing, especially in this pandemic epidemic, people start to not care kind of situation. And so, I'm going to let her tell you more about it. I have a bio sitting right here in front of me that I could actually read it to you. But you know what? Sometimes hearing it from the source is better than from the page. So, with that being said, Ms. Becker, would you kindly?
Thank you very much. Hi, everyone. So, I am Julie Becker, and I'm here to talk to you about voting in general, some of the mechanics of voting, and also to talk about Miami Gardens elections specifically, and also vote by mail specifically. I got interested in voting in general after I, so I spent 26 years at McDonald's hamburgers, then I spent 14 years with President Clinton, then I retired down here. And I got really interested in voter registration. And a friend of mine and I started a group, 16 Plus Vote, focused on pre-registering people who were 16 to 18, and then registering anyone who's over 18. So, a lot of people don't even know that if you're 16, you can register to vote, and then what it means is you can't vote yet, but your card's going to come in the mail right when you turn 18, and you'll be all ready to vote, and it's all taken care of. So, we started this group called 16 Plus Vote to highlight that 16 is when you can register. I think the schools used to register everybody at 16, but maybe they're not doing it as much now. So, you can do it yourself. And then in terms of just the mechanics of registering, you know, if you have a driver's license, you can actually do the whole thing online. I find it's easiest to have the forms and fill them out by hand and mail them in. That's actually what my organization does. And we are available to actually be at any events that you might want to have somebody doing voter registration. It's pretty straightforward form, and you just want to make sure you have signature and some basic pieces of information, less than you probably think. You just need to know the last four, your social, or have your driver's license, and be able to print and sign something, and you can register to vote. So, another really interesting, well, important thing now is voting by mail. And that has totally to do with, well, it has to do with a lot of things. It's highlighted because of coronavirus, and maybe you don't want to leave your house, or maybe things are going to be really terrible on Election Day, whether it's the primary August 18th, or the National Election Day, November 3rd, and maybe you're not going to want to leave your house. To sign up for vote by mail, you can do with a phone call, you can do it by filling out a form and mailing it in. You can stop by the election office, you can do it online if you're already registered to vote. So, it's wicked easy to do. What it means is, they'll actually send you the ballot 33 days ahead of the election. You can look at it in your house, figure out everything, something like you don't know this person, you can actually look them up, you can get it all ready to go. And you can mail it in if you don't trust mailing it in because of the history of the last election, which I felt for quite a while, although they've changed some things. Then you can bring it to any early voting location and just drop it off. Or you can, you can actually bring it to the early voting location, tear it up and vote at the location. You just, or you can bring it in Election Day, tear it up and vote on Election Day. So, it's really handy, it's like an insurance policy to make sure your vote gets counted. There's a bunch of security things that the supervisor of elections has done to make sure your vote is going to get counted. The day it arrives at the supervisor of elections, they check the signature, and they'll let you know if there's a problem with it. They won't wait until Election Day and then tell you it didn't count, and then you have like 48 hours to fix it. They'll send you the forms to cure, and they'll tell you that the problem right when they get it. So, I say, sign up for vote by mail, get the form, fill it out, and then go to an early voting station and drop it off there, or do your voting there. The other thing I wanted to say, I know I'm going to run over here, but
That's okay.
Miami Gardens has a really, is really special and different in terms of their election schedule, because Miami Gardens has their general election on the primary day, unless I, unless your website's way off. So that on August 18th, you're actually have a general election for the local box, which is, yeah, which is going to be for the mayor and seat one and seat three and the at-large seat five, I think.
Yes.
Maybe some other positions that I don't even know about. But that means that you got to vote in the primary, not just in the presidential election. And then the other thing is that because a lot of people actually don't vote in the primary, your vote is going to count more in the primary, because maybe only 30% of the people vote in the primary. And maybe 60% vote on the, on November 3rd. So, your vote would have twice the weight. Now, the other reason that you got to vote in the primary, can I talk about a couple of races that are really important?
Sure.
Okay. So, there are two candidates that are running for nonpartisan spots that are really fabulous candidates. One of them, Danielle Levine-Cava, is running in the primary with Democrats. But I don't know if you know this, but in a nonpartisan race, which the mayor's race is nonpartisan. And let me just say that Miami, Dade County, and Florida have the most Byzantine confusing election that I have ever seen. But nonetheless, because it's a nonpartisan race, anybody can vote. So, Democrats, Republicans, and independents can all vote. If any of the, it's five or six candidates runs, if any of them get 51% in the primary, they got it. They won the election. And there's, and there's not going to be a vote in November. And again, because so few people vote in the primary, if everybody turns out for a candidate, you can get them. Then you can give them a victory just by turning out. And then the other, the other candidate that this is like really important about, if you haven't heard of Melba Pearson, you got to look her up. She's running for state attorney, and she's running against Catherine Fernandez Rundell in a Democratic primary, but there's nobody else running. Because nobody else is running, and again, I said, Miami, Florida, it's complicated, because nobody else is running, Republicans and independents can vote in that primary. And this is a chance to get, she's running for state attorney. So, she's going to be the primary justice officer for criminal justice in the county of Miami. And it would be great to have somebody with 16, a black female with 16 years of experience as a, as an assistant prosecutor, who got, didn't like it that much, some of the things that were going on there, became the head of the ACLU, and now she wants to take that position. True equal justice to everyone in Miami Dade County. And if she can get 51% of the vote, she's got it. I'm telling you, she's a long shot, but if people turn out for the primary, you can give it to her. And you can have a person turning the page and starting a new story about criminal justice in Miami.
Okay. Ms. Becker, thank you very much, in fact. Thank you. All right, we're going to move over to Dr. Angela Brinson. And she, I put your little logo on the back. Thank, you know what, because, I should have done it for you, Julie, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I'm going to go ahead and throw it up there for you, just in case a virtual background behind me, so that it'll remind us of what you're doing and what you're saying, and we'll move on from there. There I am. Brinson, I understand that you have PhD license in school psychologists and pediatric cannabis. That is, you know, that kind of piqued my interest, a cannabis consultant, and oh, yeah, yeah, everybody started thinking the same thing, you know, it's like, what? Pediatric cannabis, I'm like, what? You were talking about 16 and up to vote, I'm like, I need to hear from you. Also, my bio says that you are the CEO and clinical director of Psych? Psych Ed?
Ed Solutions.
Psych Ed Solutions.
Psych Ed Solutions.
Immunity Behavior Health Center. All right, listen, the floor is yours. Tell me everything I need to know about you, and you do.
Okay. Well, first, I want to thank Shannon for inviting me to this forum. I'm very excited to be here. I am a native of Miami Gardens, born and raised. North County Elementary was the first school that I went to.
North County.
I was baptized at Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, when it used to be a little small brown church. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's how far I go back, okay? So, yeah, like the bio says, I am a licensed school psychologist and a pediatric cannabis consultant. So, as a licensed psychologist, I provide psychological evaluations to children and teenagers whose parents have concerns about their academic, social, emotional, behavioral outcomes, both at school and at home. Okay? So, we go in, we look at academics, we look to see if there are any emotional concerns, anything that we can do to help kids succeed at school. Okay? Now, the pediatric cannabis part is important to me, because what that means is I'm not selling weed. I just got to put that out. You know, I'm doing that.
Like you got to stay somewhere, right?
Exactly, right? So, what I do as a pediatric cannabis consultant is I talk to parents and I educate the community about the use of CBD. Now, I don't know if you know about CBD, but CBD comes from the same plant as marijuana, okay? THC, but CBD has a very different impact, okay? So, most of the kids that come into my office for things like ADHD are actually on three to four different types of medication. Right? Want to calm them down, want to make them eat, want to sustain focus, and want to help them sleep. Okay? So, CBD products do exactly those same types of things, but without the psychotropic effects. Okay? So, I educate parents on the uses of the drops, CBD drops, their CBD gummies. We treat kids, we treat pets, we treat the elderly. So, there have been no negative effects with CBD. So, it's something I like to introduce parents to as a way to avoid going right to the psychotropic medications off the bat. Go ahead, you had a question?
Well, I said awesome.
Oh, awesome.
Good information.
In addition to that, my agency provides DUI treatment. We also do counseling, we do therapeutic counseling, we do a lot of mindfulness techniques, something as simple as teaching you to how to breathe, right? Because the goal is always to help you to control your emotional, your emotional stuff, right? We don't do a good job of doing that, because we don't even know how to breathe. So, a lot of my kids I work with, I teach them yoga poses, breathing techniques. We do things like play with slime, things that are interactive, to kind of get them to learn how to regulate their own emotions. On the adult side, we work with adults doing the same thing, mindfulness techniques. We also have a life coach, a male life coach that focuses on males and transitional issues, relationships, job loss. And especially now with COVID-19, we know that there was a significant increase in issues relative to domestic violence. So, we like to provide a safe space for our guys to come in, to talk it out with a life coach, especially because we know guys are not necessarily fond of the whole counseling. So, we like to offer them a safe space for that as well. My agency works with interns from Nova, from Florida Memorial, from St. Thomas. So, we're also a training ground for those students that are wanting to be mental health therapists and psychologists. And my number one goal here today is to let Miami Gardens know that there is a resource in your own backyard. I'm on 441 and, what is that, 183rd Street in the Lincoln Building. If clients have Medicaid, all of these services are free. Okay? Psychological testing, the counseling, it's all covered by Medicaid. So, during these times when parents think that they don't have a professional to turn to, here we are. We're here, and we're ready to give you the support that you need to work through this time. One hot issue that I'm dealing with right now is parents getting really upset and anxious about the next school year. Right? That is a hot item right now, hot button item right now. So, what we're trying to do now is have parents to stay in the moment. Either you're going to be by uniforms, or you're going to be by pajamas, okay? But either way, it's going to take a while before this thing is straightened out. So, we're encouraging parents to stay in the moment with your children. Watch your children, talk to your children, validate their concerns. Because oftentimes, what looks like behavior problems are really signs of anxiety and depression that we're not dealing with. So, again, my goal tonight is to make myself a known resource for the city of Miami Gardens.
All right. Thank you very much. We got, we're going to hold off the questions until the end, and we'll go from there. All right. Mr. Eric Campbell is up next, I may unmute him because, oh, that was my timer, I had started a timer, so. But you beat the timer, so, okay. You hold me, you beat the timer. Let me unmute Brother Campbell, and, oh, okay, yeah, unmute yourself, because I'm asking you to unmute. Yeah, that's just good anticipation, man, that's all it is. Hold on one second, let me go ahead and change the background. Because in your bio, it talks about some books that you wrote. And I located those books, and I researched those books, but I'm not going to talk about those books, because I think you might talk about it. But they were, I was really surprised, because I didn't know that you wrote those two books, actually. But I do know that you are a native Miami, and I like people who are native Miamis, because there's only about seven of us left. My only, my only thing with you, sir, not that you served in the military, but you were in the wrong branch. I mean, you were in the Air Force.
No, man.
But the soldiers, we appreciate, we appreciate your service. And certainly, we know that you, you rose through the ranks and, you know, in the police department and major. So, without further ado, I, it's, I just can't wait to get to the end of this stuff, because I had a question, Julie had a question, but Doc, I got, I got some stuff. Go ahead, Brother Campbell.
Thank you, Tim. Thanks, Shannon, for allowing me to come on. You know, and the topic of this discussion is public safety. And that's, that's a huge area, you know, three minutes, three minutes is really, it's not going to be adequate, but, you know, I can cut it briefly. I can, I can, I can just sort of give an overview of what my, my ideas and concerns I have about public safety. You know, public safety is a major concern for every city, you know, no matter where it's, in the north, the south, urban, suburban, rural areas, public safety is important. And it's important, because, you know, people want to feel safe in their communities. You know, they want to have, to be able to go shopping, walking, riding bikes, going to and from work. They want to be able to feel safe and just don't have this level of fear that exists in the large, in some of the major metropolitan areas. And so, you know, they hire officers, you know, to prevent crime, to solve crimes after they occur, and then generally, just to make them feel safe. That's what public safety is all about, that's where the title comes from. You know, if you look at any city budget, I think police departments perhaps the largest part of their budget. You know, it, most of the money that's spent, I mean, the budget is expended for personnel costs and for, for, for police department. And so, you know, that's, that proves that it's important to citizens to have public safety departments, police departments, if you will, sheriff's departments, and those sort of things. But like I say, people just really want to be safe until, you know, not until recently, but here recently, it's been sort of elevated that people are now not only concerned about, you know, the criminals, you know, they're concerned about police officers, police misconduct. And so, that is a large, that is a large discussion in and of itself. You know, I've been in law enforcement for 31 years prior to retirement, and I've had a lot of experiences being victim of police misconduct and being supervisors of, you know, officers who are responsible for, you know, enforcing law and laws and making people feel safe. So, that's my general, you know, talk I have about public safety. But there's, there are some ideas I have about what's going on recently about police misconduct and what I personally think needs to be done in that regard. And then I also have, you know, some things to say about what I think, what it might take to get better police officers in the various departments, and to have police officers in your areas who are, you know, who originated from this, from your area. You know, who can develop relationships, who've been there, done there, you know, been there, done that. And so, they know how to, know how to rate, because they originate from that community. So, and I have some ideas about that in that regard, too.
All right, well, listen, you opened a can of worms, but I'm going to open that can up after Shannon comes on.
Okay. Well, I think this is a hot topic. Let's, let's take some questions from our listeners out there, then, and I can wrap up in a few, let's take some questions.
Okay, all right. So, everybody that has a question, you have the permission granted to unmute yourself and, and speak your mind. But while you're doing that, going back to Ms. Becker. Ms. Becker, the, one of the questions I thought of when we were talking about this was whether or not you were finding many obstacles to people signing up to vote. Because I know that for years, we've been stressing, get out the vote, get out the vote, we need to vote. We need this right here. I know when President Obama was running, he's isolated and went through social media like it was nothing, and boosted interaction, and got people to just come out en masse. Wonder what kind of problems you have in getting people to actually do it, especially since you started at a young 16 and up, so.
Well, it's an interesting question. So, I've seen two different problems. One is, we kept running into actually older gentlemen who had been incarcerated in their, in their youth, had served their sentences, and then had, had like, you know, a 60-year-old gentleman who committed a crime when he was 20, spent his time in jail, came out, registered to vote, had voted for years and years and years and years, got to vote for Obama, President Obama, the first time. And then when he went to vote for him the second time, they said, you were taken off the voter rolls. We don't have you registered. And then, and I thought that happened once, and I thought, okay. But then it happened like three, four, or five times. And I thought that was bizarre, a little research, and it seems like there was a voter purge that was possibly quite illegal that took place in between. So, so there's some, that's like, that is an issue, and I think that somebody in that position can just go register now, and there's, there's really nothing standing in their way to get themselves registered, especially with the laws in their current moment, where the state has to prove in 21 days that they owe too much money, that, whatever. I mean, so, I think, but even that person, 20, who committed a crime a long time ago, nobody's going to have a record of that, you just know it. That was one problem. And then the other one is indifference. People who just would be like, no, I don't, I don't, I don't want to vote, I don't want to, you know. And sometimes it's like, well, if somebody is an ex-cellulose, but doesn't want to say that. But, and it could be, but I think, I think there was, you know, the people who don't believe in the system, why should they register to vote and vote? Which is, you know, kind of the most horrible. And I think that, you know, I think, I think the sad part is that President Obama did, I think, a lot to change that. And then it's been all, you know, downhill since then. So, but I, but I think that there's a possibility of some more motivation with somebody like Melba Pearson running, who can actually, you know, change the face of justice in Miami Dade County, and some of the other candidates, like Shannon, who are running, who can make a difference. But I also, you know, think that the real chance that Joe Biden has to sort of set us on a course correction, and honestly, no matter who he picks for VP, I think he's, he will make a big difference. And then, of course, if he picks an African-American, then I think that's going to have even more of an impact. So, you know, but it's the indifference, is the part that is, there's no magic solution. And I don't know if maybe, Dr. Brinson, you might have some insights, given your field.
You can answer that, Dr. Brinson, if you, if you like.
Way to throw me on the spot there.
Okay, well, you know, before you get on the spot, before you get on the spot, let me do this, let me do this. Because when you were talking about the children, I was wondering, what age range are you doing? And how, how difficult would it be to get parents on board, thinking that cannabis, I know, I realize that the cannabinoid system, you know, endocannabinoid system is okay, but how do you get them to jump on board with that, too? So, take that question second, take Julie's question first, and we'll run from there.
So, I didn't quite understand Julie's question.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, I mean, I think that there's a, I guess, a psychological barrier to people, to some young people, maybe 20s, who do not believe that there's any point to registering to vote, because they don't believe there's any point to voting. And I'm thinking, because they don't believe the government does anything for them, which, while it's an understandable point of view, given a lot of history, it's the way to, it's the way to change things, to change them within the system. And so, overcoming that interference, you know, a psychological point of view. psychological point of view. Who's squeaking?
It's the Air Force. The Air Force sit in chairs all day and they like to rock. They don't hear the squeak. You don't hear the squeak.
I was going too long.
No, I'm not, I'm not squeaking with you.
In response to your question, Julie, I think one of the issues is that we're not giving our young people the opportunity to make an effective change. A lot of times, we, we're getting older, so we think that they're just dreamers, but they're actually doers. They're actually doing things that we thought about, like, for example, this thing that happened with Trump's speech and how the kids, they took over, they bought those tickets and they showed them, right? A lot of ways, we need to give them the respect that they're due. I mean, why not let them try to help us with these issues? Because we're tired, okay? We come from a generation where our parents said, get a job, stay in that job and retire, and you're gonna be great when you get older. Who wants to wait till they're seventy-five to be great? You know, the younger generation, they're, they're, they're writing their own books now. They're, they're choosing themselves over their career path. They, they know how to do all that stuff. So we should be learning a lot from them. I have a lot of respect for that.
Second question.
I wanna chime in on that, moderator. I concur because, you know, as an educator, I work with young people and then I'm a mentor with young brilliant minds. And she's absolutely right on, these kids are so different. With young people, they're so different. But we have to tap into that, you know, and that's why I like to be connected with the right people, but she's right on it.
Yeah, I mean, we spend a lot of time calling the younger generation lazy, but they're more productive. They get things done in an hour that took us, you know, eight years to do. And hey, I'm here for it. In response to your second question, the youngest person that I have had to have a conversation with about CBD parents, two years old. What typically happens is behaviors start early, right? But we look at it as, oh, that's cute, and oh, he's gonna grow out of that, right? But what we're doing is reinforcing those things instead of dealing with them. I find that ninety-eight percent of the parents that come into my office and that are interested in learning about CBD, they like the CBD, they use the CBD. In fact, before a client leaves my office, they have tried the CBD, said, I don't have to go home and wonder what's gonna happen to their child. So that education takes place right there in the office.
Great.
Good stuff, good stuff.
All right, Shannon, what's your punch number?
Four zero five.
Okay, I'll throw, okay, Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
Your book, Injustice for Some, I just like the title. Because right now, the, the, the public outcry is defund the police. I think that's the most ridiculous thing they could think of, but I, but I want your opinion of it.
Yeah, defunding the police, and here's my interpretation of that. I don't think that any municipality or elected officials in any city is talking about just giving the police department all together. That's not, I think perhaps they use the wrong term, if you will. Let me give you an example of what I think they're trying to do. Just like if you have a corporation and your corporation is not producing, it's not really functioning, it's become dysfunctional. What a lot of corporations do, especially when you're not making a profit, they file for bankruptcy and start all over again. So I think, in my view, that's what they're doing. They're saying that let's, let's, let's get rid of all of these union contracts, all these different rules, try to get rid of some of the bad personnel, and let's just start all over again. That's what my interpretation of defund, defunding of a police department means.
Okay. Let me answer this. They're talking about legislating, legislating the, like, chokeholds and, and things that policemen can't do. Have they gone far enough or not far enough?
You know, I don't, I think they have not gone far enough. And then what I guess was second derangement that is, is, is becoming difficult to enforce it. I mean, they can make a rule saying, you know, you know, you will not do chokeholds.
Right.
But you got some officers that are gonna still do it. So therein lies the problem, as I said, they need to have a way that they can deal with bad officers. And in my view, it's some of the state laws, that labor laws that protect officers, arbitration and all that kind of stuff. And then you got police unions. In my view, a lot of police unions have more power than the police chiefs.
That's something.
I'm telling you, that's, that's beginning to, that's how it's beginning to be. They fire officers, and then six months later, officers are back with full pay. So that therein lies, what I think is, is a serious problem.
Well, one last point. Martin Luther King said that there's no way that you can legislate morality.
Exactly.
And modify behavior.
That's right.
That what they need to do is, if you are charged with a hate crime, you need to charge it as a hate crime and you go to jail. And that, that'll solve the problem. You know, because the thing that you really need to do is, is correct the behavior and stop it, just, just eliminate it. Because like you said, I might not use a chokehold on you this time, but I might, you know, baton you in your rear so hard that, you follow me? I've done the same thing. So there needs, I think they need to go just a little bit farther. And the reason I mention that is because as you pointed out in your book, Injustice for Some, there, there are people like you, that, that people, the incident in Orlando, in Orange County. That was totally unnecessary, but that happens every day. That's why the protests now is going on with, you know, why are we killing and killing and killing and, and nobody, and, and in the, in the past, the grand jury is, is exonerating everybody. Nobody did anything. You want Martin Luther King to get beat to death, and nobody did anything. He beat himself, apparently. My point is, do you think that, that if we could somehow speed it, some kind of legislation that would call hate crimes, hate crimes, that, and just make it a, because, because I remember when, prior to the ten-twenty life law, you, you, you could get little time, no time, whatever. But once they put that law in effect, if you went and you committed a crime with a gun, you got ten years. Just straight across the board. And if you did it again, or shot the weapon, I believe, then that was, that was twenty years. And if you kill somebody, that was life. That stopped a whole lot of people doing a whole lot of things, except the ones that are, you know, believe they're crime, you can get away with crime, that, you know. But do you think we need to go ahead and try to get some kind of stronger legislation?
You know what? I think that even with stronger legislation, it's gonna be difficult because there are gonna be certain district attorneys and, and so on and so forth. You got certain judges who are just not going to, you know, have equal justice, if you will. You could make a law, but it's, the law is not always enforced the same for everybody.
So justice is not always blind. Any questions for any of the candidates that you have that I have not heard from you? Please unmute yourself momentarily and ask your question if you have it. Okay, I don't see anybody raising their hand, nor do I see anybody unmuting. So, I see you back there, brother. You all right. You got a question? Go ahead and then throw it out there, brother.
All right, what, what do you do for the, the young man that's sitting and scrolling on Facebook all day long? And he's seeing all this injustice done day in and day out. And he's, you know, he's not, he's not working, he's unemployed, and now he's all hyped up and he's all riled up. You know, and as soon as he gets out, because he's, he's locked in all day long, can't get out because of the coronavirus. Now you got this with him being unemployed, and then you go into the store and then you, your face with this.
Put your face in the camera, boy.
Try to hide, try to hide.
That's all right.
Y'all put me on, y'all put me on. Now, all day you're strolling, you're strolling through, you're strolling through, like, most of the nights, I find myself strolling through Facebook. And, and what I'm finding is that, you know, in the morning, I'm all hyped up and tense, you know what I'm saying? Just because of the, the climate that we're in right now. And then if you, I, I think if I go outside and you say something to me wrong, you know what I'm saying? I might have a good feeling with it. So I, I'll address this to, to the officer, the retired officer. What do you do, Mr. Campbell, in that case, to a young man that, that's all bottled up and he got all this stress on him? And, and he, he's unemployed or whatever the case may be, and the first thing you come out and you say something to me wrong? Well, how am I supposed to respond?
Well, for, you know, from a, yeah, from a police officer perspective, and I can tell you how I handle things like that, you know. It, it's, it's at the point now where a lot of police officers just don't know how to communicate and de-escalate. They don't listen. You know, I think that in a situation like you just described, described, if the officer, I was the officer responding to your situation, the first thing I should try to do is to make sure that I'm listening to what you have to say. Some people just want somebody to tell their story to, tell how they feel. And just communicating with them on, 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 on same level, you know, you don't be above them, authoritarian or anything like that. And make them, let them understand that you understand where they're coming from. And then if there's something you can do or refer them to, to a psychologist or special needs kind of effort, you do that. But, you know, we have twenty officers who don't know how to do that. You see, they want to be there, I'm the authority, I'm, I'm, I'm in charge, you know, you either do what I say or else. And so that's not the proper way to approach that. You are a human being. You have an issue. So I'm gonna listen to what you have to say. And then if I can refer you or give you some support or some help, then that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm not supposed to escalate, I'm supposed to de-escalate it and then just give you the proper referrals if you need it.
Hey, you can always get some of that CBD.
We have been able to decrease marijuana use in a lot of our clients by using CBD. It's not the fact that they're getting high, it's the fact that they're able to relax. Able to relax, you can control your emotions, right? So CBD has actually been very helpful.
Yeah, I was gonna say, see the doctor right there. I mean, hey, that'd be it. It depends on if you, if you go out there and you, well, how angry you are, if you go out there hulking up, you know, like, nah, we gonna just shoot you and then call it a day. But no, actually, Dr. Brinson is right, and Aaron Campbell is right, and so just don't do it. Because, I mean, back in the day, the, the stuff that you watch, it influences you. Because I remember Roots, man, I got mad at Roots every time I saw it. So, you know, I'm like, okay, but then, of course, I watched Bruce Lee movies too and the karate movies back in the day. You know, and, but.
That's way back right there, Bruce Lee.
Hey, well, you know, Kung Fu Theater. I remember that.
Yeah, let me just, just, just a few observations about police misconduct, some things that's been mulling around in my head since all of these things have been occurring across the United States here lately. And, you know, they could, they could, they could, they could talk about training, they could talk about changing the rules, they could talk about community policing, they could talk about civilian review panels, you know, all kinds of stuff. That stuff is not gonna work. Let me tell you what I, in my view, based on my thirty-one years of police experience, let me tell you what will work. Okay, I'm gonna tell you what it will.
Wait a minute, Tim, I'm gonna listen, I'm gonna get close so I can listen.
Let me tell you what it's gonna take. It's gonna take conducting timely investigations whenever misconduct occurs, a timely, transparent investigation of the incident, number one, okay? And then if they find that the officer was wrong, they need to take swift, severe, and sure punishment when it happens. Once the evidence indicate the officer did it, not six months from now, not a year from now, you, you charge it, you give, it's swift and it's sure. You have, you have to have them understand this is what, these are the consequences for your behavior. They know, they know appealing and all that kind of stuff like that. And then you have the whole supervisors responsible and those who stand by and watch it happen, other officers, you're gonna have to hold them responsible for it. If they're able to do those things, I guarantee you, just like recently now, they're putting officers in jail, they're charging them with battery. The more they do that, the chances are it's gonna be some significant reduction in police misconduct in this country.
Now, the thing is, my problem with that is, I, I find it very difficult for the police to police the police. We might have clear and conclusive evidence, but that might just be enough for them to say it didn't happen.
Independent investigations.
Okay, now allow me to do on that one. Okay. All right, well, listen, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now to you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, I just wanna thank each of you for being a part of this candid conversation tonight. This is part one of a four-part series. So come and join us again, same place, same time, next Tuesday. We'll be doing this every Tuesday. So I would appreciate you logging back in next week and hear what we gotta say. Different topic, though. We're gonna be doing different topics, and then you'll be learning a little bit about me as we go along. But as you see, ladies and gentlemen, I am Shannon Campbell all day, every day. I am the best candidate for the City of Miami Gardens Council seat number one. I ask that you visit my website, scampbell2020.com. Show me some support by a contribution of, and no small amount is too small. I need your support and more importantly, I need your vote. So you see, I'm well-connected, I'm bringing the information and the resources to you, because that's the kind of person that I am. So spread the good word, and I'll see you next week.
You all have a special invitation to join us next week, okay? If I don't see you, I promise you, I'm gonna miss you.
All right now.
All right, I'll see you when I see you. This is a wrap. God have a blessed night and stay safe.
Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye. I'm, I'm logging everybody off at the same time. Bye-bye.